Well, you better leave a chair. She never sits on the line. Please don't.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 11th, 2020 meeting of the City of Brentwood Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll them all, please.
Michael Deeming.
Here.
Marvin Blazza.
Here.
Rebecca Jacobs.
Here.
Jeff Moore.
Here.
John Ritter.
Here.
Lisa Shirley.
Here.
John Nuremeyer is here. We have a quorum. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Nuremeyer. The Commission will note that the Commission did not have a quorum at their last meeting. Thus, we did not have an official meeting. So, do we have, we do have a quorum tonight, Mr. Nuremeyer?
Yes. Seven? Yeah, that's a quorum.
Okay, so we do not have minutes?
No, we have cherry two as well, so.
Ms. Bilderbach made it. Very good.
Definitely have a quorum.
Very good. Well, we do not have minutes to approve as a result of that lack of quorum, so the Chair would just note the notes from the February 12th meeting for the edification of the Commission. We have one item under whole business, and that was the item that we took at the last meeting, which is an application for a site plan from addition-
My name is Paul Boyer. I'm a civil engineering design consultant. This is Rob Lapp with Keyadini. Again, appreciate the opportunity to be here. So, we're here for the Retinet Institute. We're also doing storm sewer extensions up the, up the roadways. Currently, there's no storm sewer extended to this property. So, I can go into more detail, but I was just gonna hit the highlights. Some of the issues that came up at the last meeting, one was stormwater. We explained that. All the water on site's gonna be captured. We'll treat it per MSD's requirements. It sounded like the, the neighbors were relieved because there apparently is quite a bit of runoff coming from the site. Another issue that came up was the lighting. So, we are going to lower the standards to, or the standards are gonna be set at-
Same height they were before?
Same, but we're doing dusk to dawn. No, sorry. Where, the lights will shut off at-
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Yes, because he has to be lighting the parking lot after ten o'clock, even after nine thirty for that matter, and we're going to work and see what his minimum time is as soon as the premises vacated from all part of all the employees and the parking lot is shut off completely.
And then on weekends, the lights will be off, correct?
I don't think he has any weekend work, so we can easily bring it off.
And then, one of the other, and we have some samples here, but one of the other comments was just what do the, the fence look like as far as around the perimeter? We'll have a four-foot vinyl fence where we butt up to the property. We have an example of that. And then we also brought an example of versi-lock, the versi-lock retaining wall that we're proposing. So, on the west side of the development, there's a significant grade change. To the, to the south and west, it's almost nineteen feet from our main entry, and to the north and east, it's about eleven feet. So, the grades are falling off significantly. So, we're gonna have a versi-lock wall on the west property line. So, we have an example of, just samples of what the fence and the walls look like. Currently, the, currently the walls, they're railroad tie walls in bad shape along the west property line, so those will be removed, and we'll go in with a versi-lock wall. I think with, with, I think those are the only issues unless we-
San Luis County signed off on-
He gave us conceptual approval, yeah, and I have an email.
Okay. And, Mr. Boyer and Mr. Lapp, you certainly recall that there were many neighbors, of your few neighbors, that were present at the last meeting, present and raising some concerns, and the Commission, I recall, directed you to get with your neighbors. Did, did you make nice with your neighbors?
We talked with them after the meeting, and I, I think-
All positive feedback.
Yeah, I think we-
Which neighbor was this?
Okay, well, we'll open it up, sir, to you soon enough. There were many, there were several, many more than tonight, I would note, for the record, that were here.
One of the, yeah, so one of the other items was the neighbor on Moritz. He has a dog, and we're talking about during construction, so we added, we're during construction, we'll, we have a plan, our plans call out a fence to be added. So, a temporary fence. So, I think, I think we addressed all their concerns.
Were there any calls or neighbors that reached out that weren't?
We didn't receive any.
Responded. Okay, very good. Okay. Ms. Kirkemaier, any report from staff?
Just two additional notes. Well, one was actually already said, but that since the last month, the San Luis County Department of Transportation signed off on the ride-in, right out only there on South Frontwood. So, they gave approval to that, home area approval, and then also in terms of that there is no issues with the site distance. So, that was provided in that email, and that's why we gave it to you at your seats tonight to get that information back to San Luis County. And then the only other item that I have, they did have to place a cure table tonight because it came in this afternoon, but I did talk to Patrick King, the neighbor at Bridgeport, and he was here last month. And the only thing that he really wanted to still bring up to the Commission was that from the comments, and it was something that Dr. Joseph, he was here at the last meeting, and he spoke about how the parking lot, that there would be employees from other of their offices that would use the parking lot. And this letter here, or this email that he gave me, just basically said that this morning at five-thirty, that he did note that there were employees that appeared to be from other centers that Dr. Joseph had, and that they get picked up there and shuttled to other locations, so.
He, he mentioned that, I think, in the meeting last month as well, because they get shuttled to other locations that have too much parking, and then they, they come back around nine o'clock after the day is done.
Right. And so, what I explained to Mr. King is that, that really isn't any infraction of our code.
Right.
And that we knew kind of during the plan review process that there were actually a surplus of parking, and again, our parking requirements are that a developer applicant needs a minimum, that there really isn't a maximum. So, I think he just had concerns that if that could continue, maybe there would be all parking lot. But again, just wanted to at least pass it on. He had another, he had another engagement tonight that he just couldn't come here, but he at least wanted to just kind of enter this and leave the record and bring this to you.
Very good. Quite good. And, or see that Commissioner Bilderbach's comments regarding lighting abutting the residential have been addressed in the interim as well?
Yes. Actually, even better than I thought, because I love the idea of them being off entirely. It's great.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, questions from Commissioners for this application? Mr. Moore?
The color topographical map that you brought tonight's giving me a really good view of, of the grade.
Right.
Please satisfy the MSD arrangement that you have, because all I see is water draining straight towards Bridgeport.
We've got, we also have the inlet side.
Yeah, so there, no water will be discharged towards-
There's no water discharged on this?
We have a trench drain across, and we're gonna collect all the water. There's a trench pavement catch basin here, so the water's coming across, and it'll be collected, and then piped all the way down.
So, who engineers that? I mean, I, I mean, isn't that a lot of water coming across that lot?
Uh, it's about the same as what's currently there. Well, I mean, it doesn't matter about the-
Except it's all asphalt this time.
Yeah, it's all, but it doesn't, it, yeah, we're collecting all the water there. The differential runoff is actually roughly the same, because we're incorporating impermeable, permeable pavement on the property as well.
I understand what you're talking about.
But no, this is what we do day in and day out. We're collecting, we have the catch basins, we have curbs, all the water will be collected, diverted to the inlet with curbs. There's spotty curbs or no curbs on the existing property now, and that's why they're having the runoff problem. So, the entire parking lot's gonna be curbed, six-inch curbs, and it'll be directed to the catch basins. And it's not only on Bridgeport, but it's also on Moritz. So, in Moritz, we're doing the same thing. We're actually running all the way up Moritz and collecting all this. So, there's really two watersheds. We have Bridgeport and Moritz, and we're catch, literally catching all of it. The only areas that we're not catching is this, this little green, actually, that's even being taught, so it's really this green area here.
Just for my reference, what is the scale between the topographical lines?
Well, this is a-
Five feet?
No, this is probably like seventeen feet or so.
I understand what you're saying.
No, they're one foot count.
You're one foot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you're the one we have, sorry, the one foot counters.
Understood. He answered my question. My only concern is, is it just, the color did a great job of showing me how much of a grade that is. And yeah, if you've entered the site, you can see it, but now knowing that it's asphalt and headed towards Bridgeport, I just hope that catch basin's big enough in the heaviest of rains.
No, it's size for that. We've already submitted MSD, and it's under review, so.
They know more than I do.
So, it's not approved by MSD yet?
No, it's, well, MSD's review process takes, you know, at least twelve weeks, so, yeah, we're submitting it to them, but-
So, this approval will be contingent on MSD's approval?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but MSD is, I'm confident, we ran the hydraulics, I mean, everything works, so.
Does that help satisfy your concern?
It answers my question.
Other questions from Commissioners, Ms. Bilderbach?
Not really a question, but one of the things that I actually liked about the plan last time is, having worked on this type of issue, I'm not an engineer, but for eighteen years, and in addition to some of the stuff we've done here, I'm really familiar with a lot of MSD's requirements. And MSD is extremely stringent, but more than that, I was excited about two things. I'm, I'm just super excited about you guys piping this all, and that, yes, that's huge, and I think that's gonna be a huge improvement. So, I'm very enthusiastic about that. I think it's gonna make the current situation better, and also the impervious surface is, and it's not cheap, it's expensive, and it's a big deal, and that's gonna really help a lot, too. So, of, of all the things on this, you know, I was concerned about the lighting and that, but I've, I've been really enthusiastic and excited about getting this additional piping done, because we could use some more things like this to improve the current situations that we have in Brentwood, because we have too many people, just unfortunately, because things were built a long time ago when they weren't built for this back then.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we know a lot more now than we used to, so.
Yeah, MSD, just to tag on to that, you know, MSD's requirements, we can't create any impervious runoff and discharge it onto adjoining properties. So, any impervious area we create, we have to either collect and pipe in the inlet, which we're doing. You can discharge like a thousand square feet or so into a roadway, but you're not allowed to discharge any impervious area onto adjoining properties. And MSD mandates that to us, so.
I wish I had the pipes on my street.
Anyone else?
A question about how many lots are gonna be removed? Are they residential lots or?
So, there's a total of five lots. Three of the lots abut, this probably shows it better, there's three lots abut Brentwood, and then there's two lots, one lot on Moritz and one lot on Bridgeport. So, there's three lots, the front on Brentwood, and then there's a lot here on Moritz, and there's one lot here.
And were they homes or?
No, this one's vacant. This one's an existing, it's a parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a parking lot right now. These are two residential-style homes. I think they're doing commercial use, is out of them.
Okay.
It's gonna be demolished. This is a one-story commercial building. It's actually kind of a dangerous situation. They have parking that's actually backing up on, on Bridgeport now.
Yeah.
But so, yeah, this one, this one will be demolished, and then we'll have one parking lot that interlinks our new access points to the development.
And what is the zoning currently? I didn't see it.
So, all of it is planned development except for the lot that's on board.
Okay.
Already where the existing parking area is.
Okay.
So, at this point, unless they would redevelop it or something, that existing parking lot can stay.
Take them.
So, are you, is there any rezoning necessary for this?
Not for what they wanted to do with the parking, the new parking area and the building.
Well, would it be all one planned development in the future, though, once the whole site is done?
I mean, I don't know if, again, whatever his future plans might be, that it would require rezoning. If he assembles more property, then I would assume probably he'd have to come in and get some of it rezoned at that time.
Do we need to do that right now or?
No, because there is no rezoning that's required for this project.
Okay.
And the Commission will recall this is an unusual approach we've taken with this, in that we're not approving any elevations, and once the elevations are, are finished on their side, that will come before us once again. So, we're, this is very limited, any view of this?
One other question. How tall is the retaining walls?
So, it varies.
Because it's hard to see on the flat board.
Well, this, so the wall is here, it actually runs like that.
Yeah.
So, you know, here it starts out basically at one foot, and its tallest, right here, is roughly, I think, eight and a half feet, nine feet, and then stays that height through the backyard of the people on Bridgeport, and then tapers back down.
So, at the tallest point, it's gonna be eight and a half feet around some, the backyards of some of the houses or whatever.
Right, yeah.
And what the, what is the color that you're talking about using, or is it?
They're very natural buff, natural color.
Yeah, okay.
They'd probably use, on the fence, they use the sand tonne fence, so kind of, it's one kind of monochromatic kind of piece of having a white fence on.
And how tall is the fence over the four feet? So, it'll be twelve feet that see people are looking at. I'm thinking about the residents.
Sure.
That they're gonna look out their backyard or whatever at a twelve-foot-high wall, some being concrete or brick, somebody being, I just, I'm just trying to get that in my mind or whatever, so. So, if there could be residents, could be affected, they might have some issues with that, but that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Nuremeyer. Any citizen like to address the Commission on this application?
No.
If you could please step up to the mic.
Yeah.
Go phone man and introduce yourself.
My name is Flora Willsker, and I just had a question about the entrances. I know that there's an entrance on Bridgeport. There also is an, an entrance onto Moritz, is that correct? So, you can drive through the block, is that correct?
You can. It's a zigzag kind of way to get through there, but yes, you can drive through the block.
Okay, and then you're proposing also that they're-
Right in, right out.
They're right out, okay. What will happen at night when the lights are off and that parking lot is dark? Will there be some way to block the entrance of your, and exits of your parking lot, or will this be a good place for people to congregate at night in the dark?
That's a good question.
I'm concerned about that for the safety of our neighborhood.
We're not proposing, you know, block or anything.
No, we don't, we're not proposing any kind of gates, anything like that on the entrances. The only thing we can do is maybe adjust one of the hall lights to stay on, and it may be a dimmer level all night long, so it's not completely dark there. That's that balance got played between residents, you don't want the light in our eyes. Still, all the light cuts off at the property line, as far as that goes. You'll see a plenty of light going out into the parking lot, there'll be no light spill on the carpet itself.
Okay.
So, is that balance between having security lighting in the parking lot and not being a trus of the neighbors that can explore?
Well, perhaps you have security in mind in that area?
No.
Security.
I mean, you don't have like a security personnel of any sort.
No, it's not, no.
Okay, so this could be a concern for the neighborhood.
Is it a concern now?
Yes.
Because it's, okay, because it's the same way it is right now. There's obviously any lighting back there, there's no lighting back there.
Well, right now, we don't have people, people are not able to drive from one area to the other. So, if, let's say there were people, and we do have people who come into our neighborhood and steal cars in the mornings, and they wanna drive through from one block to the other, it's very easy to do, and it's very easy to exit onto Brentwood Boulevard.
Going south, yes.
Yeah.
You can't go north on Brentwood.
I understand that. But that is a very big concern, and, you know, the security and safety of our neighborhood is primary. You're gonna have a dark parking lot with a very large area where people are not gonna be able to see what's going on, and I am concerned about that, and I, I just-
Up to the, yeah, we'll light it. Don't light it. It's, I mean, we, since the last meeting, they were concerned about the lights.
We yielded our lighting expert here, Commissioner Bilderbach.
Thank you. So, what I really asked for the last time was to have the lights, like West Community, the short ones, and have them on all the time.
West Community Credit Union?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Like the ones that they used to have, right?
They're applied on poles now.
Well, I know, but that's, this is what I'm-
It used to be-
Right, right. If you did that, then it wouldn't, they wouldn't be looking at it, you know what I'm saying? And, and it would be like on all the time.
Right. The only thing is, is that if you're doing like the bollards, like you mentioned, like, I think there were like four, like five bollards.
Right.
Probably twenty of them in here, light it back on it versus three light poles.
So?
It's a lot of cost involved in that, and we will entertain that, because it's not last month.
Right, right.
But-
We've asked other people to do it before, so I mean, I don't mean, I don't mean to be flip, but I mean, like, it would solve the problem, you know what I mean?
We haven't done, I mean, we've done, you know, a thousand plans, we just haven't lit the parking lots. I have it with bollards.
Because they-
I mean, something struck it either by cars or, you know.
Right, because the cars are parked in here, but you don't put them on the outside of the, the perimeter or best island.
Right, right, and you're still gonna have the street.
I mean, the thing, there's lots of considerations between the shadows, between the cars, if vehicles are parked there, you're gonna have shit unless you have lights literally every-
I think they'd be, you know, it'd be less secure that way, because with these lights up on poles shining down without the cars, you're gonna see everything you can see around the parking lot when these cars parked there.
How?
The bollards on the perimeter, we should park a car in front of the bollard, it would be here, here, and where else, between cars. That's gonna block all that light for this section, and now this becomes unsafe because it's all shut off.
Well, right now, what we're talking about is having bad guys go hang out in the parking lot.
Right.
So, we care really about is having their cars illuminated, so they can't hide out back there, I think is like the main purpose, like at nighttime that we're talking about. So, it's not like seeing between cars, because customers aren't gonna be hanging out in the middle of the night in the parking lot needing to see between the cars, you know what I'm saying?
But at winter time, I mean, it's dark at four o'clock.
Right.
And so, you get people leaving, pushing on cases who have surgery, trying to get to their cars, but it might be hard to see that there's all of that probably.
How tall are the new poles that you made, when you made the change? You said you brought them down and made them shorter?
I missed twelve there, I think it was sixteen.
I can put back down to twelve. I think if we could still do twelve, it would be different bedspread.
Okay.
But then even less than twelve, it's really difficult to throw that light out, and not having, when we had more poles, depending what's light, parking lot as well.
Okay.
That, that's more like down.
Okay, and remind me, like, when I'm thinking about the lights and the view, because balancing the two interests, because there's definitely, there's a safety neighbor interest and a light neighbor interest, so I'm, that's why I'm gonna ask this next question, even though I'm kind of familiar with the topography and stuff. But remind us all, what's, what's the elevation of the homes around it compared to the other property? Like, what's their view gonna be of a twelve-foot light, you know what I mean?
Right, you, like, Commissioner was saying, there is a, you know, almost a twelve-foot height between the grade here and the top of that fence.
Right.
So, if you're down there to look past that fence from your backyard, I won't see anything remotely even in the parking lot, because your line of sight's gonna be like this, and that, that's roughly nine feet to there, it's another three feet on top of that. So, unless you're way back, you know, a few properties back, you must see the parking lot lights.
So, when they're-
When you're adjacent to it, you won't see the lights at all.
So, when you're adjacent to it, you won't see the lights?
Because your line of sight's gonna be just deep.
Okay, so, then the idea you were saying before, and, and tell me where I'm wrong, was that you could have the, the three twelve-foot poles, and then you could light them maybe dimmer, like at night, so it's not quite as bright, but it's plenty bright to illuminate the parking lot, that cops could see bad guys in the parking lot.
So, it would be a full intensity, and we can talk to her about it, and talk about that, and make sure that the evening down.
Right.
Put on cameras and turn it down, so that would be a definitely a good solution, I think. So, during times of in use of a little time clock or whatever else, it's full brightness, and then after they have finished using it for their purposes, instead of people like that, like after that, where it's still enough illumination that you can still see people moving about, cars moving off, things like that, so law enforcement can see things better.
I, I mean, to me, that feels like a good compromise. I, I mean, I'd be curious, like-
So, it'd be still lit.
Right.
But not fully lit, so you still kind of balance, you know, security versus trus of this.
Right, and I'm a huge fan on both of those issues, like, I get it, like, yeah, and I know what she's talking about, yeah.
Thank you.
To help, Ms. Willsker?
Yes, and I have one other question, if you don't mind. You alluded to the fact that on Bridgeport, we don't really have much of a parking sidewalk, because it, the cars are parked along that side. Will that be reclaimed so that we have pedestrian walkways?
Yeah, there's a, so, I'm gonna go over the whole perimeter of the, of the, oh, on our side?
Yeah, go ahead.
And plus, I got some really cool plantings across here, the bench and things like that.
And will replantings along here as well?
Heavenly.
Good, okay.
That's my job. So, you can see here how densely planted this is, and I got some picket signs here for people who are breaking for lunch, things like that from the office. And it's also a bench here, and it's a bench across the ground as well, that's just hanging out. That's hardly improvement we need to have to do this.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Any other citizen like to address the Commission on this application? Please step forward, sir, and introduce yourself.
I'm Al Ru, eighty-eight twenty-five Bridgeport. That's the third house from the vacant lot that they're talking about. And I wanna go, we were talking about water a while ago, and I wanna go back a few years when Jerome Howe put on this big parking lot behind his building on Moritz, and corner of Moritz and Brentwood. And the water came off, went to the first house on Moritz. And even Jerome Howe was helping the lady to get the water out of her basement. And it was coming out of the basement, coming to my house, and Pat King's house. He's the, my neighbor on the east. I had, I put in two sump pumps that work when it rains. I don't, I, I don't see it exhaust when it, it's been dry for a few weeks. Pat King next door, he has water, he just had, oh, six months ago, put two sump pumps in his basement. There's water coming out of those sump pumps daily, coming underground, and I mean, this afternoon, there was water coming out of there. Not that I, anything, I don't care, I'm glad. He finally got a dry basement. But I'm just saying, another parking lot, it's coming down this way. The grade is coming down this way. The grade is from Moritz to where we are. I know you're gonna do it right, you're gonna fix it, but there will be water coming through. I don't care. So, Pat couldn't make it tonight, so he asked me to at least say that. And also, next to Pat on the east side is a rental house owned by Howe, Jay Howe, his father passed. Next to that is a vacant house, Mano's house. Now, that house is a tear down, we know that, and it will not be sold until mother dies. She's in a home, and that's the arrangement. I, I know the kids grew up, I've been in my house fifty-four years, so I know the area. Anyway, I know the Mano's kids, and I know, I talk to them when they come to the house, and so I figured, Pat, Pat told me this, and I'm relating this. It'll be torn down. At that point, Howe will sell that house, and then it's three vacant lots. The one that'll be occupied, and then maybe we need a bigger parking lot for the people to park and get them on a bus and move them out where they work. So, he's worried about that. Then, the parking lot is next to his house, not what he planned when he bought the house. Not what I planned either, but at least his house will be above it for mine. And how many more years will I be there? I don't know. I've been fifty-four. I, I plan on living another ten years.
Easy.
I'll be a hundred. I'll be a hundred. My mother was when she died, so. Well, that's the concern of Pat, you know. It's, what are they gonna do? Build a house there? It's, what are they gonna do, build a house there? They won't build a house. Here comes the parking lot. They tried that years ago. Brentwood people, no. Didn't work, but something's working this time. Anyway, that's my concern, at, at least Pat's concerned, mine aren't as well. They were, they live across the street. And they're concerned also, so...
Thank you. Well, certainly, that adjustment would have to come before the commission. But with regard to the drainage, that's a concern. You heard Mr. Moore tonight, that, that's certainly a concern, and we're relying on one. Mr., does the city have some remedies in that circumstance? It has nuisance remedies?
Before they start this redevelop?
No, after it's done.
Okay. And then MSD?
MSD approved it.
Approved it?
My understanding is that the city is, the city could consider that to be a public nuisance, to the extent that the development...
Right, I'd have to be code enforcement at that point. I mean, and again, I know it, there is a lot of pavement there, but the houses and the paving that's in the back, what we look at to begin with, at this stage, because it's still kind of preliminary, is just what is the differential runoff? So I think, I thought it was even reduced, just likely. So there's actually less water, you know, that is created from the redevelopment, so... And the piping's gonna help dramatically?
Mr. Nuremeyer?
I was just curious, they're adding piping that is not there now. They're adding piping that's gonna be directing all the water way down the street or whatever. So that has to be an improvement over anything that's existing. And then you're talking about an eight-foot tearing it down two years from now, or three years from now, or whatever, to build another parking lot.
Yeah. If I can just say one thing, because I just, just briefly, you guys have some concerns with stormwater? We, we, we do hear that a lot. And just to be clear, so on this, this one point three acres currently, and there's not a storm sewer on here that, so all that water actually, she drains off, and there's a faux inlet at the northwest corner, actually, it's not piped anywhere, it goes right through the inlet and then out into Moritz. But all that water from that one point three acres currently drains west onto the, you know, either onto the residential properties or onto the street. So, and what we're doing, again, is we're collecting all that water, we're extending sewers a hundred or so feet up the streets, and then collecting all that water on our site and piping it, it, collecting it in a basin, and then piping it past your properties into the catch basin. So we're actually collecting this, no, no sheet draining whatsoever off our properties onto the residential properties, which is occurring now. So, you know, I would expect a dramatic improvement.
Yeah.
Your sump pumps may never run. Your sump pumps may never run, that'd be great?
Yeah. Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure you knew that they're, they're doing a lot of improvements that might help your situation, that you're worried about it, it could be better than, you don't know for sure.
It could be better.
Water?
Yeah.
Mr. Ritter?
I guess when you say you're gonna, you're catching it in a basin, that'll be a controlled release basin, or what?
No, 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 catch basin, storm sewers.
Just storm, yeah.
Storm sewers, yeah, yeah. So, right now, based on MSD's criteria, we, you know, no detention would be required, because we're, the, the runoff is roughly the same. I think we are reducing it slightly, but it's not a significant amount. But because the differential's roughly the same, MSD typically doesn't require detention.
And then, what is the distance from the property line to the face of the wall on the west side of the retaining wall?
Uh, I don't know, I think it's probably roughly eight to ten, eight to ten feet. That's existing, yeah, so existing probably eight to ten feet.
Okay, I didn't see the designation for that. And Lisa, what is the requirement for that?
For a retaining wall?
Yeah.
You can actually retain a wall.
Well, I guess it started the parking lot, I guess, would be, parking lot from the property line is?
Well, so again, we're, we're working with an existing parking area and a new parking area. So the new parking area that's to the south has to meet all the current requirements. And so what it says is you have to have a fifty-foot setback from the principal building to the property line. So within that fifty foot, though, twenty-five has to be reserved for the landscaping and the screening. The parking or the parking aisle, that can still be in that other twenty-five feet. So it meets, meets that.
Are there any other concerns, Mr. Ritter?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other citizen that would like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Lynn Good. I live basically across the street from the existing building on Brentwood Place. So I look out at the building that's there now, the tan brick building that's being used now. Now, did you say last time, there's a, there's going to be an additional building? Because that hasn't been talked about.
A little addition right here.
Okay.
That whole building's an addition to that one. It's all about twenty-five.
So it's just on that building, okay. And, and the two homes, what they were homes, they're big bungalows that are facing Brentwood Place. Those will be torn down.
They'll be torn down.
That's going to be parking lot. Okay. So I, I sit up high, so my view is those two existing homes. So what I'm gonna be doing is looking out into a parking lot, because there's nothing blocking that. But is there going to be landscaping?
There's a lot blocking it, actually. Because, and according to Brentwood's requirements, we have a whole trail line street, which is just set between trees.
Okay.
And, uh, lemon trees, and also, and they're great for all colors. So from early spring until late fall, you've got, you know, a tree line, you've been looking at the block, most parking lots are full of them.
So there's some screening, is what you're saying?
There's a lot of screening.
Because it's, yeah, and because that's gonna be a drastic change, for, as far as my view goes.
Right, correct.
Okay, the other thing wasn't, and it wasn't mentioned tonight, but it was mentioned last time there wasn't a quorum, that there were going to be some picnic benches or something for employees, and that would sort of tie into your concern. That would be a place to attract, and not necessarily bad guys, but kids, possibly homeless person, who knows? So I, I, I'm with you as far as the concerns about a parking lot that's dark. It needs to be, that needs to be addressed, because that can be a safety issue. It is a place where people can come into the neighborhood who don't live there and might just, be making noise, leaving litter, finding a place to sleep. We do have some, you know, some homeless, there used to be a man that slept around different places in Brentwood. I think he's no longer doing that, but... The other thing I would say, because I live behind the mobile station, and when that was made into a convenience store, it has drastically changed my living situation. The noise level was deafening, and I worked with Mark Jordan, and they moved a couple of the HVACs, or whatever it was they put back there, but it was so loud, I could hear it, I can still hear it with my door, back door closed. But I, it was deafening, and I know they were out of compliance. So I wanna ask, in terms of anything with, with your building, if you're adding new HVAC systems, how would you, or any type of motorized things, how are you going to address that in terms of the noise pollution? And also, delivery trucks? How big will the delivery trucks be for bringing in equipment? Because the mobile's like a truck stop now, we're talking eighteen-wheelers. It never used to be that way. It's, it's not pleasant. So I'm just wondering what kind of trucks, and, and that will bring noise, and trash trucks, which I'm sure there's one now, but any of that, I'd like to, to have that addressed.
Trash, this is easier to start with, trash dumpster's right here, it's on the west side of the building. You guys can see it, I, you got, you got a copy?
I saw it.
These guys, you can see it. A dumpster right here, so trash can come in off of Brentwood and pick up the trash and go back out on Moritz and go around wherever he goes out. It was the same route he takes right now. It's just a stop you make like anybody else, so it's one to read your question, it'll be a regular routine. On deliveries, he doesn't get a lot of mass deliveries for things. It's a very small surgical, eye surgical center. So he'll have like a panel truck, like a UPS type truck come in, probably a few times a week at best. And he'll come in, drop the delivery off, you, this one, the front door's gonna be right here, and then go eat a stop on Brentwood, and come back out and go both on Brentwood.
Okay, so no, no semis? I don't know if they're eighteen-wheelers, but they're huge trucks that come into the mobile.
He doesn't have any product, I mean, even the stuff he's gonna move in here, you know, chairs and things like that, surgical chairs and so on, tables, will be moved in initially, and that'll still be on a panel truck or big panel truck.
Okay, I, I kinda suspected it wasn't to be like mobile, we're, you know, that is, that is really a drastic change in my, in my living. Yeah.
Do the very small deliveries, and he'll have like, you know, UPS brings packages and things like that, and different medications and so...
Okay, that's good to know. The one other thing I would mention, I did mention this last time as well, because Brentwood Place is on the east side of Brentwood Boulevard. And Moritz is staggered just a little bit north. And then we have the mobile station in that center turn lane, and the business that's, that's there now. That center turn lane with the, the people going, me getting in that lane to, to make a left turn onto my street. In time that people are getting in that center turn lane to turn onto Moritz. And people are coming south on Brentwood Boulevard and wanting to turn into the mobile station. There's a lot of action going on right in there. So I wanted to know, as, and I, I actually went onto Moritz and, and came up, that is a very dangerous place to try to make a left turn. I've never in my life make a left turn unless I knew, you know, I knew for sure. That's really, the view is really bad. If you've been there, you know what I'm talking about. So how are you going to, again, if you could explain how you're gonna direct traffic through that parking lot to, to not add to the, you know, the potential accidents that, that, that we face now?
Well, that's one of the things that we require to do, we could put all access entrance of this.
In what street?
It's right in, right out. So if you're coming down south on Brentwood?
Okay, got it.
You can only right turn in, you cannot make a left-hand turn in.
That would be, that would be, is that point open now? Is that where it's open now for parks?
Yeah, there's two, all access.
And that works, from what I can see?
But those are being, those are being removed.
Those are being removed, and it's gonna be further south, then?
Sure, just a little bit.
Just a little bit? That probably would help a little bit.
Well, it's a right-in, right-out, so no, your, I think your concerns are left turns mainly out of, correct. And tho, those are being eliminated.
And that center turn lane, where, where cars can be, like, you know, coming at each other?
Center turn lane from that entrance. Because you're becoming south on Brentwood, making a right-hand turn in.
Okay.
You're going to use the center turn lane. If you're leaving the parking lot, you're making a right turn out from south on Brentwood, you won't be able to make a left to go to the center turn lane.
Okay, good. What about, I'm sorry, interrupting. What about Moritz, though? Because are, is traffic going, are your people parking back behind the building? Is anybody going to be using Moritz, or is that going to, that traffic gonna be directed south?
No, they'll be using Moritz and...
So they'll be coming into Moritz, which means they'll be making left turns?
You're going out of Moritz, you mean?
Okay, so if your clients, or your, or the employee, the clients, not your clients, but the clients and the people who work there?
We would hope that people who work there should know their way around, too. If they work there, they're becoming, going north on Brentwood, they would turn into Bridgeport, and it's easier access to the parking lot.
Okay.
And becoming south on Brentwood, they could turn into Moritz that way.
Yeah.
If in the case they did miss their turn, from here, they would have to go left and turn to Moritz, yes. And if they're going north on Brentwood, I would rather be out here and make a left from Bridgeport, going north on Brentwood versus Moritz.
But I just wondered, as far as how you're directing traffic through that parking lot? Is there no plan to address the traffic on Moritz, because?
Because that's kind of our, our scope of work. We did have a traffic study done by CBB, who Brentwood requires us to go through, and he said it's not capable of traffic being added to this system.
Okay.
So we proved everything we've got as far as our time comes.
Okay, because I thought you're gonna have people that aren't familiar with Moritz Avenue being a very dangerous place to make a left turn.
Right.
Plus, when they're getting into that, you know, when they're getting, crossing traffic and then getting to go north, they're gonna be probably hitting that center turn lane, which is where there's already all the action. So I wondered if it was maybe wise to think about directing traffic out, not in, but out of, out of the parking lot. Not, not encouraging people to leave the business and turn onto Moritz if they're planning on going north, because that's very dangerous. And it's gonna add to the problem I was talking about with that center turn lane, problem with all the traffic from several, people going onto my street, like myself, people going into the mobile, people coming out of the business, it's what you're talking about.
I guess that can be, if addressed, because that'd be something like you don't go left and turn, or no, no access to, or no, no...
No, that's a change of this goal for the traffic side.
Yeah, that would change the whole, the fashion of traffic, because if you're gonna make a right-hand turn, okay, maybe right-hand turn, go this way. They know the traffic's going to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm talking about coming out of, out of the parking lot. Not, not, not Moritz in general, but people coming out of the parking lot of this business. If they're being directed, they're not familiar with the, the neighborhood, and they're, they're, and they go out, when they exit that lot, and they wanna head up, you know, they wanna get up to Brentwood Boulevard to go north, that's where there's gonna be a problem. Are you all following me?
Well, one thing, I wanna make sure that, Ms. Good, we did have our traffic engineer look at the configuration here, and they did render a report. So I wanna make sure that you take a look at that, hopefully some of your concerns will be addressed with that.
I don't know, because, I, you know, what I have in my head is, I live there, and I know it's dangerous now, so... That center turn lane right there.
Respect your concerns, that's why I wanna make sure. If we, Ms. Kirkemire, could you get Ms. Good a copy of that traffic engineer report, and hopefully that'll address some of her concerns?
But I would like you all just, to just consider that, that that may be a hazard, and you want your patients, yours, the doctor's not here. We want people to be safe, not just in the neighborhood people, like, like us, but also people who are using, who aren't familiar with the hazards in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Any other citizen that would like to address the commission on this application? Commissioners, do you have any other comments? If not, the chair will entertain a motion and would request that the move on, take into account the dimming at night of the lights.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bilderback?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a recommendation that we approve this application and send it to the Board of Aldermen with the condition that the light poles be the twelve-feet poles that we discussed, and that they be dimmed in the evening and nighttime, as we discussed, and, but remain on all night.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Bilderback, second by Mr. Nuremeyer, any further discussion?
One question, I just had, do we want to have the first and second reading since they were at one meeting here already, and they spent a lot of time, we didn't have a quorum? Could it be a first and second reading at the Board of Alder, at the same time, or whatever? I'm just...
Very much appreciated that, yeah.
Are you in a rush?
We wouldn't get to say that, yes.
So I just thought it would be, yeah.
Would you like to amend your motion?
I would like to amend my motion that we would also request the Board of Aldermen to, in their wisdom, infinite wisdom, consider a first and second reading at the same meeting.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Nuremeyer?
Yeah, that works for me.
All right, motion by Ms. Bilderback, second by Mr. Nuremeyer, any further discussion?
Do we need to add the MSD part to that?
Yeah, it's, I think that is implied, that it's subject to...
It is.
It just is.
Okay.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, we would usually permit, we're gonna give the approval for that.
That's all, that's just a hard rule.
Good point, Mr. Fabaza.
Good question.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Sherry Bilderback?
Yes.
Michael Damon?
Yes.
Mark Fabaza?
Yes.
Rebecca Jacobs?
Yes.
Jeff Moore?
Yes.
John Nuremeyer is yes. John Ritter?
Yes.
Lisa Shirley?
Yes.
What's your passes?
Thank you, Mr. Nuremeyer, thank you, Mr. Boyer, thank you, Mr. Lab, thank you, citizens. No new business this evening, automatic report, I see no Aldermen or women, city planner's report, Ms. Kirkemire? A report, no need for subcommittee, national...